The July 17th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie City government. Typically, our meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of the month, however, not in the summer. You'd have to look at our calendar online to see the dates. The open meeting portion of time is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers. If you wish to speak during that period of time as a scheduled speaker, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting day with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, like today, I will open the floor to unscheduled speakers, and these portions of the meeting are not recorded nor televised. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second. Any items to add or delete? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, June 12th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Corrections to those minutes?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? Any questions on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. This brings us to our first public hearing, which is the vacation of part of Franlow Road. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Yes, on the consent agenda, you approved the final plat for Southview, our senior housing project at Prairie View and Franlow Drive. Another item related to that project for that to move ahead is vacating a small portion of the Franlow Road right of way. So this is simply the public hearing needed and then the resolution vacating a portion of Franlow Road.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the vacation of a portion of Franlow Road? Hearing none? All in favor? I'm sorry, we need a motion.
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating that part of Franlow Road as shown on the municipal road plat filed as document number 955-983.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Colvers is the next item for our public hearing. The movement of Colvers.
Yes, Mayor and council members, Colvers, the moving of Colvers, that's exactly right. Colvers is currently located at Prairie Center Drive and Plaza Drive at Southwest Station. So this project is for a new construction of a new restaurant relocating across the highway at Prairie Center Drive, and the building will be located at the opposite end of the parking lot where Luns Byerlees is, the Prairie Village Center. The proposed building is 4,700 square feet, and there is within the packet, and I believe what will be part of a presentation, the architectural details, articulation, building material overview, so that material is obviously all in the plans and in the packet. Access to the site will be from the existing parking lot. That is there currently, that open parking lot. So what is before you tonight is a planned unit development concept review and the first reading of that planned unit development with waivers. The applicant is here tonight to provide an overview of the project, and then the council will hold the public hearing, and the applicant and the staff can answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Actually, do we have the presentation on the ... there we go. Okay.
Can you give us your names?
Yep. My name is Jeremy Foss. I'm with ISG. I'm the civil engineer for the project.
Ken Chezick with Dean Snyder Construction, the general contractor.
And so we're here representing Epic LLC as the developer and owner of the store or of the restaurant, and then the contractor for the restaurant as well. So as it was stated, this is kind of the summary of what was just spoken about, how we're moving from the southwest transit station to the north side of 212. It's a 4,700 square foot building, basically at the northeast corner of Plaza and Prairie Center Drive. This slide shows the exact location, other uses on the property. Currently, the current, the site is an existing parking lot that's a little underutilized, so it's a good opportunity to reuse this property to, for use that's actually going to generate something else besides just a parking lot. So it's a good opportunity for some redevelopment in this location, and it's a fairly visible spot as well. One of the things with this connection too that makes it a good one is the trail system that runs along 212 here. There's a nice connection there, so for those that are biking, it's an easy stop for ice cream or something like that. This is the site plan, the proposed site plan. Things to highlight on this is a pedestrian connection to the sidewalk along Plaza that would bring people in on the east side of the building around to the main entrance. Sidewalk on three sides as far as, as part of parking, there's a outdoor seating area off the northeast corner of the building that has native plantings along the curb as well as a decorative fencing to kind of give it a sense of place and frame that space. Drive-throughs on the west and south side of the building, and so those coming in off of Prairie Center Drive, you're going to basically be coming south, and it's a direct connection right to that drive-through. The crosswalks there that would go across where the drive-through traffic comes through is to highlight that spot for safety reasons. We're also proposing a crosswalk from the Colvers up to the Luns Byerlees to the north, and that's in a shared drive aisle. And the way to differentiate that right now, what we're proposing is doing a concrete walk that's dyed throughout the mix, it's like an old brick red mix, and then striping that with white stripes on both sides, basically four-inch, four-inch thick stripes. And the reason for that is that it would allow for a smooth finish just because of grocery store carts and potential vibrations and whatnot with groceries. We've wanted to try and avoid that, which is why we chose this product. As part of going through the stormwater process with the district, one of the things you'll note is there's permeable pavers in the parking area to the north of the building. Those will be in the drive aisles on either side of those two islands and then in between both islands. And so I think it also kind of creates this sense of arrival to something different than just a parking lot, that this is kind of the Colvers area. So I think that'll help with visualness of where people are. This is the landscape plan. Landscaping has been added to meet the city code requirements. We have a lot of existing trees and vegetation along Prairie Center and Plaza Drive that already provides some good screening of the building, based on heights too. Prairie Center Drive is approximately, oh, I can't remember, but I think it's about eight feet higher than what the finished floor of the building is. I'd have to double-check that, but it's a pretty good difference in elevation. And then obviously, the elevation changes as you move north along Prairie Center to the point where you have a connection or an entrance for vehicles. The other thing to note, actually, on the last slide, which didn't show that, but along Plaza Drive, so the eastbound lanes of Plaza Drive, currently there's a median there, and there's two through lanes. Those, so the northern through lane is where people are making a left turn into the access off of Plaza to the southeast of Colvers, and as part of going through the city process and having a traffic study for the site, it's been determined that we're going to put in a small left-turn lane so you can at least get two cars out of those through lanes to prevent some traffic backup and just provide a formal left-turn entrance into the shopping center from Plaza. And as far as back on the landscaping, so on the landscaping, all the islands within the Colvers property area have trees, and then there's shrubbery along the foundation of the building to provide the foundation planting requirements. And then, like I said before, we have some natives that we've put in, in the outdoor seating area, and have tried to use natives wherever it made sense to do so. And then lastly, the other, the other piece of infrastructure that's somewhat new is we've had to put in a biofiltration area, which is straight south of the building, which basically sends the majority of the drainage south of the building into this area, which filters the water and then sends it on downstream. Already covered those points. This is kind of a rendering of what that crosswalk may look like. It may be, that's a pretty bright red, but it may be just a little bit duller than that, but you can kind of get an idea of the differentiation between the asphalt and this crosswalk.
Crosswalk.
Good point. As part of the architecture, the materials proposed are manufactured stone veneer, manufactured brick veneer, some metal corners trim, and it'll feature a glass storefront and dining area. So the decorative fencing around the outdoor seating area. And then colors that are trying to work with the Colvers blue, which is pretty typical for their stores, we're trying to integrate that with all the rest of the features of the building. And then the last point is that the trash enclosures is incorporated into the actual building structure, so it's almost an extension of the building, so it's not something separate. And you'll see the next slides here, a few renderings, so this one shows the outdoor seating area off the northeast corner of the building, general idea of materials and Southeast view looking at the drive-through from the east side of the building with varying parapets on top. And then this is from the north side showing the, where you can kind of, what to point out there is the trash enclosure, how it's an extension of the building there, it almost acts like a garage in a way.
So the finishes on the outside have been adjusted to meet all of the Eden Prairie regulations. It's really not, you know, now it's not standard Colvers anymore. You know, it has completely stone and brick veneers on the outside. Were, in a normal prototype, they would allow other materials on there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for proponents?
I have a question. So the colors on the parapet, or the awnings on our screen looks like this vivid, vivid blue, but it's still the Colvers blue, right? It hasn't changed?
That has not changed.
Okay.
It's just that they would, on a regular Colvers prototype, it would have siding on it, like cement board siding or other different materials where we've changed that to make it so that it's all stone or ...
It's beautiful. I love the materials that you chose. I'm really talking about the color, because on our screen, it's like, the blue is incredibly vibrant, let's say, but you're really just using, I mean, you are using the Colvers blue.
Yeah, that is a Colvers thing.
Yeah.
What about bike parking? Do you have, did I miss that, where the bike parking is? Do you have that? Do you note it on there?
Yep. It's noted on the site plan. It's right next to, it's southeast of the outdoor seating area.
Okay, southeast of.
So you should be able, you should be able to bike off the trail, take the sidewalk on Plaza, basically take the whole sidewalk we put in on the property, cross the crosswalk, and park your bike.
Perfect. That'd be great. I think that'll get a lot of use.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes. There's a lot of things I do love about this. I like the pervious pavement and the native plantings. And I do like the outside, you know, that it is upgraded like your old one was. I was on the original planning commission when they were doing the other one, and I know that they upgraded that, and you've got the awnings that we had agreed to hopefully flowers. One thing I haven't figured out on your plan is where do cars stack up? Because they give you typically a number and then tell you to move forward. And where is that spot on this?
Can we pull up the PowerPoint again?
Might be even helpful to go back to the picture where you could just ...
There you can see it. Is that, oh, no, that one right there.
Yeah, so in this one, if you look just to the south of the building, you'll see an arrow that points to the right there. So there's essentially three lanes right there.
Oh, okay.
And so there's, there's basically three spots right next to the building, two spots to the south of that lane, and then the center lane basically stays open so that people can still get through while people are waiting.
For those people who decided that they weren't getting ice cream after all.
Or that too. Yep.
Or they hadn't, they thought they were just going around the building and they were actually going in and looking for a parking lot. Okay, yeah, no, that looks good. But I do like that you kept a lot of the extra features that you had agreed to, you know, a long time ago. The only thing I'll miss is that huge canopy over it.
Okay. I have a few questions. First of all, it looks really good, and I'm glad to see the plans for kind of a revamping of that parking lot there. It looks like a lot of the islands that you'll establish will be a big improvement and help keep heat down in that area, so I'm glad about that. I wanted to ask you about landscaping. Along the Prairie Center Drive, Plaza Drive area, is any of the landscaping that's currently there being removed?
None of it is being proposed.
No trees are, are ...
No trees are proposed to be removed.
Okay. So all the landscaping that you're putting in is all new landscaping. What kind of trees are you putting in? I mean, in terms of size, are these ...
There are some that are, I mean, as part of the requirements, we have to put in certain tree sizes, so I think they're, for the trees, I think they're three-inch or four-inch caliber trees where they're new, which I think end up being four or six feet high, and obviously they're going to grow over time. The species, I could tell you in one minute.
Okay. And are there just trees on those islands in those selected areas, or is there also any area for flowers and bushes?
There are some bushes and shrubbery that's proposed there as well.
And then, can you talk to me a little bit about sustainability, other than the permeable surfaces that you're using in some parts? Are you using any recycled materials in the construction of this? Are you doing anything like, have you considered solar panels?
So a lot of those items have been, have been discussed, and obviously as part of financing the project and what Colvers is typically used to doing. If it benefited them, they would definitely do it. For this project, we even, we even considered a green roof at one point, but they've never done one in the past. They weren't necessarily ready to risk doing something like that. So, I mean, some of those things definitely were discussed, they just never made it to the finish line. But as far as sustainability in general, I mean, a lot of the things that we are trying to do is more on the stormwater side, more on the engineering side of just trying to get stormwater treated via vegetation wherever possible, obviously the permeable pavers. The other one is really just a reduction of existing impervious surface as well, trying to minimize how much impervious surface we actually need to still function.
So where are you using the pervious surface?
So those are in the, so when you say pervious surface, you mean the green space?
No, I assumed you were using pervy, permeable concrete or pavers?
Yeah, so we're using, so we're using permeable pavers to the north of the building, so all the parking stalls that are in the row of parking that runs east-west next to that main east-west drive aisle.
All permeable?
It's all permeable, as well as the extension into the drive aisles that enter into this area.
And then can you talk to me a little bit about the pedestrian walk from the current Luns Byerlees to your store? What was the original plan for that walkway?
So the original plan was stamped asphalt, and it actually hugged the backside of all of the parking stalls to kind of get it as far away from the center of the lane as possible. But after some discussion there, one being safety, pulling it away from where the, right where the backs of the parked cars are, so this is basically a straight shot from north-south, just so there was a little more room for those that may be shorter in stature like kids or like myself, that you may not be able to see as well, so just being able to pull them back a little bit, it would give them that visibility. But then also, in discussions with the grocery store, stamped asphalt does create metal, the image of pavers, and so there are gaps, and it creates basically a, it's going to create vibration when the wheel goes over the top of it. And so as part of that, with their discussion, they kind of wanted us to try something else that would deter from that. And so that's where we came up with, well, we want a smooth surface, but we still need to differentiate it. Let's, let's change material types, because usually looking at two different materials next to each other, usually that's a pretty good indication that there's something different going on. And then the next step was, well, let's color it, and when we color it, we'll color it through, so if, you know, if it ever chips, it's still going to be red. And then the white on the edges essentially defines it even more, so it's, you've got some clear difference between the color and the black as opposed to just red versus black. So that's where we ended up.
Okay. I agree with you. I think you mentioned that you thought it was a little too red in the picture. I agree with you. I think that's a little too red. When you talked about it being brick red, I was imagining a walkway that had the brick look stenciled into the paint. Can that not be done? I mean, you talked about stamped concrete that had a brick pattern, but can't you also stencil?
You could, you could stencil it, but it would, it would rub off in a short period of time.
And then you have the problem, if it chips, it's not the same color underneath.
Right. Then that's gone as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So we thought concrete would be the best way to go.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, just a comment, I would say, I hope that the soil conditions in this location are, are an upgrade from the last location, and that construction will be a little bit easier than in the other spot.
It's still a challenge, but we are going to get there, so.
This site does require files.
It does.
It does? I didn't think it would.
It's, it's, it requires a significant number of files, so.
Really? Okay. I thought it would be quite, quite a bit different from the other spot.
That's what we were hoping, but that's not what we found.
Well, I think this is a nice addition to the site that, you know, it always bothered me when I went into that parking lot, there was so much parking, and it was never used in that area, other than maybe Christmas, the day before Christmas, when people were all in the store.
People are in and out.
Yeah. So this is a good use of it. Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this Colvers development and the parking lot development?
So seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution, oh, do I have it right here? Yes, I've got it. Okay. Pardon me. Adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 13.6 acres. Approve first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers on 13.6 acres, and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 13.6 acres into three lots. Direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, and authorize the issuance of an early land alteration permit for Colvers at the request of the developer, subject to the conditions outlined below.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back to Eden Prairie.
Lincoln Park Apartments Cascade at Town Center is the next item for public hearing. Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, Lincoln Park Apartments, now known as Cascade at Town Center, is a five-story mixed-use building with underground parking, ground floor office and retail, and multifamily housing, and a project that was approved and built in 1999. The property was acquired by new ownership this past December, and they're rebranding the property, thus I mentioned, with the Cascade at Town Center name. And they're requesting that the property be rezoned to Town Center mixed-use to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. And the project that they're coming forward with tonight is to convert a portion, a little more than half, of that retail office space into 16 studio apartments. And the planning commission recommended approval of that with the conditions related to affordability and inclusionary housing. There are some affordability components related to the tax increment financing that currently exists with the property. There are waivers with the PUD approval as well, and similar to our previous project, the applicant is here to provide a presentation to you, and then we hold a public hearing, and the staff and council, staff and developer can answer any questions that council may have.
My name is Mark Swerdlo. I'm principal with Magellan Investment Partners. We acquired Lincoln Park Apartments in December of last year. Magellan Investment Partners is a multifamily owner-operator. We own properties in multiple states. We typically buy existing assets and improve them. Lincoln Park was a perfect example of an asset where we saw a great need for additional capital. Minneapolis is a market that both my partner and I, as well as our company, Magellan Development, which is a partner of ours, has built and owned in numerous locations within the state. We saw this as a true opportunity to buy a terrific physical asset in a terrific location, great demographics, great economic drivers, and again, this is an asset that's needed capital. The previous owner who had acquired it literally after it was constructed had operated as such, but hadn't put much capital in the property. Our goal here, which is consistent with our plans with most assets we acquire, is to invest heavily into the physical asset of the property, improving units, improving amenities, improving the outside amenities and exterior look. So in this case, with Lincoln Park Apartments, we saw a need to invest in the amenities, so our plan is to invest approximately $2 million into the amenities, which include, and if you look at the slides here, as an example here, we have on the left side what was the existing clubroom. We have completely renovated, gutted the clubroom. In fact, we also took part of the clubroom to build out a new fitness facility with high-end fitness equipment, so we've redone the hallways leading into the common areas and everything. So that's the physical asset within, within the property that we've improved. We're also looking to renovate the apartment units themselves. Again, these units have not really been touched since originally constructed in 1999, so in each of the units, we're spending approximately $14,000 to add in hard surface countertops, stainless steel appliances, plank flooring, Nest thermostats, and other improvements to make it comparable to some of the new product like Martin Blue and be competitive, but at a much lower cost than what new product costs. And we've seen, we've completed 18 renovated units. We have another 15 that are underway, and the market has been very receptive of these units. We just, in fact, in the past two days, signed five leases, of which three leases were for renovated units, so clearly the market has a desire for this. In addition, we're spending capital, oops, on the exterior. On the lower portion shows the courtyard, which we are improving. On the upper portion, one of the amendments or requests that we've made is to add a new monument sign at the corridor of Eden and Single Tree Road. Currently, the monument sign is located on Single Tree set off, not very visible. We want to make a presence on both Eden as well as Single Tree. We have used both landscape architects and designs to incorporate all the native plants and landscaping that the city looks to see. With the addition of the light rail station, which will be at the north end of our property on Eden Road, this will help create a presence for this property and drive lots of traffic. So we see that as a great opportunity. And then on the lower portion is, there are two very large courtyards that, again, have not been touched. There are actually two fountains. There's a fountain in each of the courtyards that have not operated in years. So, one courtyard will be more of a kid's courtyard. We will put in a poured rubberized surface with a sort of a play climbing area with, you know, potentially a bocce ball court, other areas, plus a grilling station, so parents can watch their kids. In the other courtyard, we will make it more of an adult courtyard, where we have some lounge areas, grilling stations. We also, in, in, in this area, will be putting in six planter beds, so that our residents can grow vegetables. We are adding rain collectors, so that they can use collected rain to grow their vegetables. And then finally, there is an indoor pool that has an enclosure currently, that we intend on taking down and putting in garage doors, so that it can be opened up during the month or two that you have warm weather here. I'm from Chicago, so, for the four months or so. But, again, make it very inviting to our residents, because these courtyards have really not served any purpose to these residents for many years. So, combined between our common area amenities and renovating the units, we're looking at spending upwards of $4 million into the physical asset. The real opportunity that we see in this project is the commercial space. It is fairly well-occupied, at about 90%. I think we have 60 of 65 office suites currently occupied by like 46, 47 tenants. These are local business owners that find this a great local area. It's not, you know, like a WeWork setup. It is more just providing them a place where they can office, don't bring a lot of clients, although we do have chiropractors, massage therapists, and otherwise that do provide service. But we've seen, the fact is, is that we believe with this asset and its makeup, because right now we have 51 bedrooms, 84 two-bedrooms, and 52 three-bedrooms, that there is a need for a smaller footprint unit. So, what we think is a terrific use of this project is to convert a portion of it into studio units. Our original plan was to convert it all. We worked a lot with staff to come up with a plan that worked for both our benefit and maintain the commercial aspect of this asset. There is a belief that when the light rail station comes in, that this could potentially become a more retail focus, and we are receptive to constantly look at this market, and when it is viable as a retail, we would be thrilled to operate it as such. But as of this point, we see that the office suite's use is valuable. We've already started dialogue with some of the tenants there about expanding and building out their space. But on the portion, the majority of these units are going to be facing the courtyard, where we'll put in little balconies, so they'll have access out there. But these studio units will range between 5 and 8, 900 square feet. The rents will be attractive. If you look at your market today, other than Martin Blue, there really isn't any properties that provide a studio unit. So, we think that adding 16 to this property with its makeup, makeup will be terrific for the property, and we believe that, you know, the budget to do this is probably another couple million dollars. There will not be, you know, other than building out these units, a real substantial change. We will address access points, so that the commercial tenants are limited to accessing just their portion and not accessing the residential, so that they won't mix. We will put in a specific hallway to bifurcate those two and give the commercial tenants a different entrance. Currently, the main lobby that's off of Single Tree is used purely for the commercial tenants. It's wasted space for commercial tenants, because they don't bring in a lot of clients and customers, so we'll, we'll convert that to be residential, more consistent with what we see in residential projects with a clubroom and everything else that they're accessible to. As it relates to the affordability, the property currently has 38 affordable units, and it's heavily occupied, heavily within three bedrooms. So, there's eight one-bedrooms, eight two-bedrooms, and 22 three-bedrooms that we operate, consistent with the TIF. Those are at 50% AMI. We have residents that stay, we don't have a lot of turnover, as you can imagine, when you're providing those affordable units, but they're well-received, and in fact, we've started to renovate those units and find that those residents, those are looking to receive that type of upgraded unit, too. So, they're very receptive to that. And our intent, over the next three to five years, is to renovate all those units and bring them up to the same level that's consistent with newer product. I don't think there's, yeah, that was it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Quick question. So, when, when you're renovating units, I mean, you're investing a significant amount into each unit, not to mention all the, all the renovations you're doing to the property itself. I mean, there's a lot of cost there. So, are, what's happening to rents in those situations? Are they going up a certain percentage, or how are you, how are you managing to, to afford to do all the renovations?
So, it's an excellent question. First of all, what we do, and this is consistent with all of our projects, we renovate as units turn. So, we're not looking to vacate the property. We're, in fact, not non-renewing residents. What we typically do, we'll do a market increase, and to the extent that, you know, we've seen in lots of projects, including this, we put in an increase that may be a little above market, but they're preferred to stay in a convent, what we call, you know, a classic unit.
Legacy.
A legacy unit. So, what we see is, on renovated units, the rents, the increases, depending on one-to-three bedroom, is somewhere between about $160 more a month to maybe $240 a month to, to receive an upgraded unit. Like I said, we have not had a problem getting acceptance of the existing residents or new residents to want to get into those new units. And that's really our model, which is, we are trying to provide, I hate to use this term, affordable market-rate apartments. So, that's really, when we renovate, we, we look at the market, we assess who our competitors are, what they're doing, and try to provide a new unit at a affordable price.
Great, thank you.
Did you, Cap, can I just?
Yeah, a couple of questions, you know, because there are these affordable units there. We want the percentage to stay. Can current residents renew their lease then at a similar price, or whatever the step upgrade is?
Yes. In fact, as I said earlier, we, we do not see a substantial turnover with affordable units. We have a, we have a waiting list of people that would like them, but in most cases, existing residents will stay in place, and, you know, between the TIF and vouchers and otherwise, their overall rent does not increase as much. Luckily, the TIF does provide, you know, a substantial coverage for the difference between what a resident is able to pay and what is market.
Will they get some of the new appliances and some of the things in their units?
Absolutely. Our goal is to, and like, we have renovated, we have renovated two affordable units to date, and our goal is to continue to do that. I think the greatest-
Do the people continue living in these units?
Yes. Yeah. In fact, that's the biggest challenge, which is getting a resident who is in a unit who does not want to move, we put them into an existing classic unit, renovate their unit, and move them back in. So, they do not have to leave the property. We can work with them in order for them to have-
Can still go to school bus or whatever.
Yes.
Good.
And, and the new units will be proportionally affordable as well?
We, we are, based on staff's recommendation, going to provide 20% of those 16 units as affordable, consistent with the TIF. However, at staff's request, we've agreed to take more in two-bedrooms than studios, so rightfully trying to equalize out and provide more family-type of units. So, not, we're not applying all the affordability to the 16 units. We are going to spread it out to other units, so that we can-
So, there may be more family units available than there are currently?
Correct.
That would be great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you address what happens when the TIF expires on this?
Sure.
And when does the TIF expire on this?
So, here, I have my cheat sheet, too.
Okay.
So, the, the TIF's expiration date is December 31st of 2027. From our perspective, and consistent with conversations that we've had with staff even before we bought the property, was that the TIF, for our period of ownership, we are happy to keep the TIF in place and let it run through its term. At the end of the term, in our belief, those, other than in connection with the 16 units, independent conversation, the, those 38 units will go to market after a year, you know, after the TIF expires. Once those leases expire, those units could go to market.
Right. So, you're going to try to continue, extend the TIF district? Is that what you said?
Well, we certainly will run it through the term. We've then had conversations about extending it beyond its 2027 term.
Okay. And then, on landscaping, this beautiful picture that we have of the new sign, is this the same one that you showed us?
Yes.
Because it was very small, and it was hard to tell it was the same.
Yes, I know.
Okay, yeah, it looks great. I love all the color. Thank you.
Yeah, we were, I mean, and staff did a wonderful job of, of giving us the guidelines and everything, and engaged a local architect, landscape architect to plan it. I mean, we do feel that the current signage is woefully inadequate, and in fact, at staff's, staff's request, there was also a wood sign that was on Eden for the office suites leasing, which we've recently taken down, because we, you know, it's a small portion of what we do. We are marketing this as a residential property. We don't have a problem leasing the commercial space without having a presence, and in fact, as you see on that signage, we are not identifying this property as anything other than a residential property.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions, council? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Cascade?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 4.83 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development review district with waivers, and zoning district change from community commercial to town center mixed-use on 4.83 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second. Did you have a question?
I'm a council.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. If I might just speak for a couple of moments about the affordability piece?
Oh, okay.
Because I'm just afraid there might be a little bit of a disconnect between what's been discussed here and what's actually in the staff report, because the staff report is recommending that you impose a condition whereby the applicant would be required to provide 10% of all units in the entire building in perpetuity as affordable. And if that is your intention, I would like to address that issue, because we've got some very significant concerns about that.
I think that was the staff recommendation, so it's-
Yes, that, that's correct. That's a staff recommendation, planning commission recommendation, planning commission approval. And as you see in the packet, it's in the report, I'm sorry, I missed your name, the attorney did send a letter after the planning commission approval and before this meeting, raising a concern with wanting to do that. So, it's still our recommendation, though, that those units be affordable in perpetuity. That's a staff recommendation.
So, you're saying 10% of the new units? So, of the 16?
No.
There's 20%, there's 38 units now, plus there are going to be a few more as a result of this conversion, but they're not guaranteed in perpetuity. So, when the TIF district runs out, they could get rid of all affordable units. So, this 10% in perpetuity would ensure that there are at least 10%.
So, so the affordability, number of units would drop, but there wouldn't be the subsidy associated with it. But on many of the recent projects, we've been asking for, without subsidy, as part of inclusionary housing, that 10% of the units be affordable. And that's what we're asking, following the TIF, and that was part of the original application of planning commission approval.
So, with 38 units, what percentage is that of?
I think that's 20% now.
That's 20 of the original, 186 units.
So, it would be 18 of them.
No, so, so, so we're adding 16 units.
Right.
So, what we would go to is, after the TIF expires, and what we've said in our plan is that we're willing to accept the 10% against the 16. We're adding 16 new units. We will accept a 10% for perpetuity. What staff is asking is that that 10% apply to the entire property, so we will have 21 affordable units in perpetuity, from what was originally 38 and adding 16.
So, 21 versus four. Or are you saying you do 10% of the new 16, so two?
Two, it'd be down to two.
Yeah. That's not many affordable units, is not.
So, 20, 21-
But they're not getting any, they're not getting any TIF money for, for those units either, so, I mean, it's-
Well, we want to really see some affordable units in every building, so this would be cutting them in half, 10% rather than 20%, correct? You said 20, that makes 21.
That's in nine years from now?
Well, but that would continue on past that, correct?
Yeah, no, no, you're absolutely correct. That, that is, we would be going from 20% against 186 to 10% against-
Yeah, and we really do want to continue, you know, just because you can't afford as much doesn't mean you're not a great neighbor, so.
I, we don't question that, the, the-
It's just the affordability of the project.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the fact is, is that under the current TIF, the owner has a unilateral right to terminate the TIF at any time. We've agreed, as consistent with our conversations with staff, that we won't do that during our ownership. Whomever buys it, will, that will be their decision. What you're asking us to do is, if we add 16 units, you're suggesting that, once the TIF has expired, that there are now 21 affordable units without any TIF support. Economically, there's no reason to add 16 and then have, be stuck with 21 without any support. The numbers don't work at all. There's no reason, you are taking, you are taking what will, is 4 million plus another two or three million investment in the asset, and actually declining the value of the property by imposing a 10% in perpetuity against existing assets.
Ms. Jeremiah.
Your honor, council members, just one more detail I wanted to point out. With regard to the inclusionary housing that would come into effect after the TIF, only half of that would be required to meet the 50% AMI requirement. The other half would be allowed to raise the rents up to 80% AMI. So, really, we're only retaining five, you know, basically, half of those 21 would be affordable at what they currently are today, so approximately 10 or 11 would be, you know, as opposed to 40 that we would be getting. So, there's a substantial change, and staff's intent was to try to create a level playing field, since we have required this of others without subsidy, and, you know, they would have the same challenges potentially. Obviously, it's a policy question.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I might, on that point, as the city manager pointed out, my letter to you is in the packet. Perhaps you've got a chance to, to review it. I won't repeat it all here, but one of the, one of the principal points that we're making is while we share your concern about the affordability issue and, you know, want to support that to the extent we can, the fact of the matter is, is that there is no legal basis for you to impose this requirement on this developer. There's no statute that would authorize you to do that, and there's no ordinance that would authorize you to do that. Now, with reference to your, your practice to date, we've, we've really tried to understand what that practice is, and we've asked repeatedly if there's something in writing that we can see, and what we got was the statement that recent multifamily housing proposals were subjected to that requirement. So, we asked, well, what were those proposals? And we told that, we were told they were two, and that they were senior housing projects that were recently approved. Senior housing projects are, of course, a very, very different economic model than the type of housing projects that we're looking at here. But, you know, putting that aside, the, the, the practice doesn't even apply on its face, because you don't have a new proposal here. You have a proposal to add 16 units. And what staff's suggesting is you use that opportunity to retroactively come in and say, all of a sudden, now you've got to impose on the existing building a requirement that didn't, that wasn't in, in existence at the time that this project was built. So, I don't really think there's a precedent issue, because you've never had someone come before you and say, look, we, we just want to add a few units. We then saw in the staff report that you got for tonight, a new description of your policy, and the staff report for tonight says that you apply this policy when people are asking to increase density. Well, we're not asking for a waiver for density, and we don't need a waiver for density. So, I'm not quite sure what that was all about, but the fact of the matter is, this is, as Mr. Swirlo explained, this project is not financially doable under the circumstances that staff is suggesting that you impose, and respectfully, I, I frankly don't believe you've got the legal power to do that.
How are you not increasing density?
The, the waiver issue, as explained to us by staff, is that you require us to ask for waivers for things that do not comply with the zoning. We are rezoning to Town Center mixed-use. Town Center mixed-use density requirements-
I'm sorry, I thought you, I heard you say, we're not increasing density. You are, but you're might be within the guidelines.
Right. Yep. We're completely consistent with Town Center mixed-use zoning.
Okay.
So, if we, I mean, the, the motion as stated, then, that includes all the conditions, the staff and council conditions that go along with it. So, then, would we, if we were to modify this to anything, we'd, we have to remove some of those staff conditions, then?
That's correct. You could certainly do that, and as I said, this came up after planning commission, before council, so this is recent information. It wasn't negotiated or discussed previous to planning commission. You could do it now, or you could do it between first and second reading, or you could do it at some point before you approve second reading.
How about, how about this, if I would propose that, since I'm the maker of the motion-
or discussed previous to planning commission. You could do it now, or you could do it between first and second reading, or you could do it at some point before you approve second reading.
How about, how about this, if I would propose that, since I'm the maker of the motion, how about if I would say that we keep the motion as it stands for tonight, and we allow staff to work with the developer and owner and to try to reach an agreement that would be acceptable to both, and that when we come back for second reading, it has those conditions?
That sounds fine to me.
How would you guys feel about, feel about that?
No, I mean, we've had a good working relationship with staff since, even before we acquired the asset, so.
Okay.
And it should come back to council, too, not just as...
Well, it will.
Yeah.
It will. It has to come back for a second reading.
Well, a lot of things just go on the consent calendar. This would need to come back.
No, yeah.
Well, yeah. But it's still coming back to the council, no matter what.
I think that's a good idea.
So let's, let's, let's do it that. So I keep my, I keep my motion as, as made, and...
Who seconded the motion?
I did.
Are you fine with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as it comes back to us.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of the motion as changed? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
So, you know, thank you for being part of Eden Prairie, and thank you for improving the property and investing in it. We, we appreciate it, and I'm sure the residents will as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Pizza Luce.
Thank you, Mayor. Our last public hearing is another new business that we're welcoming to Eden Prairie. That's Pizza Luce, going into the former Don Pablo's space in Eden Prairie. So we have an item that comes straight to the city council, because it is a minor amendment. And it is an application for, for the new Pizza Luce that includes facade improvements, a new patio seating area, green space, updated landscaping, also the installation of a crosswalk connection, landscape parking islands, some sustainability features such as solar panels and LED lighting and updates to the building. I'm sure we're going to hear about that from the applicant. There are no waivers requested, and the improvements, the improvements are compliant with city code. So the applicant is here to provide a presentation, and staff and the applicant can answer any questions you had in addition to the public hearing.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us. I got really excited at the opportunity to talk about Pizza Luce. I'm J.J. Haywood. I'm one of the owners and the CEO. But I added a few slides that were just about who we were before getting into the site plan. And I don't, I can just jump in?
Sure.
So I just want to talk, sorry.
Can you bring samples?
Yeah, no kidding.
I did not bring any samples. I should have.
They're not, you're not allowed to, anyway. They're not allowed to have them.
But it's less than $5.
Exactly. So Pizza Luce is an independently owned company. We're local here in the Twin Cities, started in Minneapolis in 1993. We have eight full-service restaurants. We separate them kind of between urban and suburban restaurants. We have four in Minneapolis and St. Paul. We have three in the suburbs and one in downtown Duluth. So Eden Prairie is just a natural expansion for us, where we have Hopkins and Richfield. And we were so excited when this property became available to come into Eden Prairie. We see ourselves as an employer of choice. We have about 725 employees. We have a huge number, like over 300, who've been with us for five years or more. We have several people who will also be celebrating their 25th anniversary with us this year. And so we're just a great place to work, and certainly, our pizza's great only because of our employees. We're really engaged in our local communities. We do a number of fundraisers for local student organizations and nonprofits that are really controlled at the local level. We do a bunch of engagement company-wide. We just participated in Restaurant Rising for all eight of our restaurants, which was a big fundraiser for legal defense. We do a number of other company-wide fundraisers throughout the year. So we really feel like being part of our local community and giving back is important. And of course, we have the best pizza in this city.
Well, Eden Prairie Community Foundation will welcome you.
Yes, awesome. We look forward to it. On this slide, I just have a number of pictures of our various locations. One of the other things we've done with the help of Nache here is move into really dilapidated buildings. So we were actually pretty excited to have the Don Pablo's location. So even though we looked at it, it was kind of like, how do we make that a Pizza Luce? It was in great shape compared to our last project, which we bulldozed in, in Roseville. We also are more than just pizza. We have a full menu. We are a full restaurant with a full bar. We offer deliveries. We do have pizza and pastas and salads and desserts that we make, homemade, and appetizers and all that. Full, we will be going for a full liquor license. We're very much known for our vegan and vegetarian and gluten-free offerings, although we do cater, of course, to omnivores. So that's a little bit of food up there. Sorry not to bring any. This is just some photos of community engagement. We do, do have a presence also in the Twin Stadium. We are very much into community of pride, so I'm sure we'll be joining yours next year. So that's kind of a fun piece of who we are. And so really, what we're doing on the site is, we are taking, the biggest thing, Nat introduced this term to me, is we're recycling the building. So we're kind of taking this 1997 building that I look at, every time I see it, I'm like, it's the masters of the universe, when everything was built really big in the 90s. I'm like, why is this big box here? So we took a walk around our neighborhood, my office is in the warehouse district downtown, and that's our roots as a company, and said, why don't we turn this brick building into a warehouse? And so that was kind of our inspiration, to really tone down the white trim and those kind of bell towers on the side, and really turn this into a warehouse-type of building. The windows were right, the brick was right. And so that's really what we're doing, is taking that dated exterior. We're also, as part of our program, we like to have patio space, you know, we're a restaurant. We want to be a place that brings in the community, and we have vibrancy and all of that. So we are looking to add a patio here. With that, we're going to be wiping out some trees and changing some of the way one walks around. The landscaping's a little bit dated at that site. It's kind of the original landscaping from 1997. When I first saw it, I think it was the spring, and you couldn't even really see the buildings, because the trees were so big. So some of that will go, but we are putting back trees and shrubs and landscaping. The other piece that we are adding is, even though we're deep in a site that includes two hotels, we will be making the first link of pedestrian corridor, which ultimately will get to Viking Drive when our neighbors change there. So we will have a sidewalk path to the edge of our property.
From the building to the edge?
From the building, yep. So this is the site plan. I think my red circles are very similar to city staff's red circle. So everything in red is what we're touching. So we're adding some green space into the existing parking lot to make it compliant with code. In the upper left, we're adding that pedestrian kind of path to the edge of our property. We're adding bike racks on the corner of our building. We have a number of staff who do bike in. We also have a number of guests who bike in, and we have a big bike event annually also. The patio is kind of below the building, and so those are the major site changes, in addition to erasing the white parts of the facade. So that's kind of what we look like. So the bike racks are to the left of the entry. I just threw our Seward de Luce map up there. We have a kind of alley cat bike ride, which I encourage all of you to join next year, in the beginning of June, which is kind of, you get a passport and you get to bike around Pizza Luce's. We had about 400 people ride this year. I was just looking up the bike path of, how do you get to Eden Prairie? It'll make, Nat rides it every year. It's a making a long ride.
It's a little extra length.
Exactly. Super fun. We are also planning to add solar panels to the building. We just, I put my Facebook post that I just did last month, we recently retrofitted our Hopkins location with solar panels, and so that's what the picture you see. And the interesting thing about that project is, those solar panels this summer will provide 15% of our electricity for the building. And as a restaurant, where we've got refrigeration, air conditioning, that's a pretty significant number. So the, the plans, which the, the picture on the left kind of show where we can put solar, that is much a bigger field than what we have in Hopkins, which is great.
But a bigger restaurant, too, right?
Pardon me?
It's a bigger restaurant, too?
It is a bigger restaurant, but, which, the cooling would be the thing that's bigger. The kitchen's not bigger. So the load from the kitchen's going to be the same. So we'll generate more power with these. And this is actually our third restaurant to have solar. Our, our Seward location in Minneapolis also has solar.
We'll also be adding LED lighting inside and out, which older generation of restaurants are all still fluorescent. This will be even more efficient on the energy consumption side.
So do you add, when you add solar, do you add storage capacity onsite, or is it just added to the grid?
It adds to the grid, but the reality is, our use is high, so we use it right away.
Okay.
We're just consuming it. I would love to say that we add it back. And when I was talking to Ken, our guy who does the solar, I'm like, and we sell it back. He's like, you're never going to sell any back. You're not even really going to store it. You're just going to use it. So kind of thinking about our environmental footprint is also something that's important to us. And we do recycling, stopped auto-watering, and done a variety of things operationally to make sure that we're being a good steward. What else do we have? Landscaping is really the next deal here. I think I went backwards. We are, as I mentioned, there's a lot of landscaping already here to the, I'm not quite sure of my directions, east.
Big existing canopy trees that are quite beautiful. I think originally, we actually were planning on trying to carve in the patio on that side, but the trees are just so lovely that we decided to look at other opportunities to create the patio. So we're really taking over parking area right now to achieve the outdoor patio, adding some green space along that perimeter. And then, since we're rotating the entry, really landscaping and really making a presentable entry. It's always odd that this entry was facing the freeway, so I think it'll be a better front door for the neighborhood and people to bike, walk, whatever, from other areas to really quickly get to and see the action and activity, because that will line the space. I think the previous restaurant really outshelled dead, because you're facing the freeway and people are zooming by. But this, hopefully, will change into more of the neighborhood feel that I think we've always been able to achieve with Pizza Luce.
Is that the end of your presentation?
That's me.
Okay, I have a question for you. I'm, well, first of all, I'm so excited that you're coming to Eden Prairie. I'm very happy. I love your pizza. One of the things about this site that I always remember from driving in to when it was Don Pablo's, is you turn in, and it's not real clear where the cars are supposed to go, and they're just kind of driving through the parking lot. Is that kind of a separate issue from, well, I mean, is it, is it an issue that's tied in with those hotels that are there? Because isn't the entrance actually by the hotel, and then you come around? And is there any way to fix that, so cars aren't going, and, you know, we're getting kids out of the car, and cars are flying by?
That's a great point. The first time of that, I went to that site, which was probably two years ago now, I was kind of like, where do I go?
Right.
Because it's dark. You come in, and it's dark, and you're facing a big blank wall of a building. So that was really the impetus. I mean, the first thing I said when we even looked at the building is, okay, this could be a great building, but we have to move the door.
Yeah, that'll make a difference.
And where we have the door, we're now facing the drive aisle. So I think that'll just make it much more clear about, here's your destination, to understand that you should come in and then split off to park. Our signage, we will have Pizza Luce signage over the door, so they'll know that it's us, and active windows.
I think people used to zoom through there, because they were trying to get somewhere, and were impatient. But when you see it, I think immediately, it will be much more intuitive, because all the entries now are kind of visible.
What is your anticipated date for opening?
In December.
Okay.
I was hoping to be earlier, but...
Any questions? Okay, thank you. This looks great. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address counsel on the culvers, or pardon me, on the Pizza Luce development?
So seeing none, I moved to close the public hearing and approve first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review on 2.12 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff recommendations and council conditions.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for bringing your restaurant to Eden Prairie.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yes, welcome.
Very excited.
We're excited to see it open. Merry Christmas.
Is there a motion for approval of the payment of claims?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lucas?
Aye. The next item tonight is, under ordinances and resolutions, it's asking for approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending city code chapter 5, section 5.37 relating to peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants. Mr. Getchell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Collins. So we've got a few minor updates to our peddlers, solicitors, transient merchants ordinance. There have been some court cases recently, some court decisions related to times that transient merchant, solicitors, peddlers can be out and about, and reasons for denial of permit. And so we're updating our city code to kind of be in line with what's happened recently. So the first one is with time. Our current code has stopping or ending the solicitation period at 7:00 PM, and we're moving that to 9:00 PM, based on, not our desire to do so, but some challenges. I believe another community actually was involved, a community nearby was involved in some litigation, and they kind of came upon the 9 o'clock time as well. And then also, we removed reference to permit denial on the basis of quote-unquote "business and moral character," and created a pretty objective exhaustive list of detail related to why we would deny. So we want to be much more clear about that. So that's, those are the two updates to this ordinance, and this is a first reading, does not require a public hearing, but would need to come back for a second reading.
So basically, this is housekeeping, cleaning up, an ordinance that we currently have, and making it compliant with state law?
It is. I just want to note that, you know, one change would be that we currently limit solicitation in our community to 7:00 PM, and this would change that to 9:00 PM. But that, that is based, Mayor, as you said, on recent court decisions, litigation, and surrounding community consistency with times that they have as well.
So that caught my eye when I was reading this. What is there in the Constitution about allowing solicitors until 9:00 PM? How do they, how do they interpret things to come to that decision?
There's nothing in the Constitution. There's no amendment that says solicitors get to go until 9:00 PM. But the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals, federal court, interpreted the Constitution because it's a freedom of speech issue. And so limitations on freedom of speech are highly scrutinized. And in order to impose a 7:00 PM curfew on that activity, it was incumbent upon the city that was challenged to demonstrate that that was reasonable in light of the goals that they said it was to promote, safety, crime prevention, et cetera. And the evidence didn't show any higher incidence of safety during the period, any higher incidence of unsafe activity during the periods between 7:00 PM and 9:00 PM. And so the Court of Appeals said 7:00 PM is unconstitutional restriction on freedom of speech. 9:00 PM is a reasonable restriction, because people are getting ready to end their, end their day, put their children to bed, relax themselves and go to bed, and you don't want someone knocking on the door. So it's, it's viewed as a reasonable restriction on freedom of speech, whereas 7:00 PM was not.
Well, we could talk about this later, but it just seems weird to me that if somebody's coming on your property, that their freedom of speech rights are protected in the same way as my property rights are.
And, and you can, as a property owner, put a sign up on your, little plaque up on your property, no solicitors, period. So one of the things we discussed was, was having some programs around that, and that would have been more administration. We'd still have to allow the 9:00 PM, but there are some programs that some cities have adopted. We'd still have to allow the 9:00 PM, but there are some programs that some cities have adopted that, uh, have a list of properties that you can't go on and, uh, but that increases the city's cost. And so it was deemed best to, uh, adopt the 9:00 PM and allow citizens the opportunity to post their own individual properties.
And I assume that doesn't apply to city council and mayoral candidates that are outdoor knocking?
I don't know, whenever I saw that in soliciting sign, I didn't.
I was the same.
Yeah, I think it does.
Very concerned.
No, but I mean, in terms of, especially if you have, if they say no soliciting, does that apply to, uh, political candidates? Door knocking?
That's a free speech activity, I don't know why it, uh, our ordinance is, is, I think it would.
Think it would apply?
I'll, I'll, I'll review that, I did not review it in light of.
So if it says no solicitors, you, as a council candidate or a mayor, mayoral candidate, you shouldn't knock on that door?
I believe that's correct, but why don't I check that just to make sure.
You might not want to anyway.
Well, I just, I'm just, I was always curious about that, so I thought, since we're discussing it.
Okay, is there a motion? Or, I'm sorry, any other questions?
Yeah, no, I really don't like this going to nine o'clock. I think the average person would be upset with having a peddler of some kind coming to their door at nine o'clock. I think that in fact, kids go to bed long before nine o'clock, especially younger kids. I think that, um, people living alone are highly suspicious of anybody coming after dark. And I will admit tonight, it will still be light at nine o'clock, but by next meeting next month, it won't be.
Shh, don't say that.
And, um, you know, there's only a period of time, a couple months a year, if that, that it's light still. It's not reasonable to say it has to be light up because in December it's getting dark at 4:30. But, um, if we have to, I guess we have to, but I'm certainly unhappy about it. I think seven, maybe eight, but nine is simply too late.
I think it's kind of self-limiting, because anyone that is trying to sell something, a product or a service or anything else, they're not gonna want to upset people. And so, you know, I think it's gonna be self-limiting to some degree that people aren't gonna want to knock on people's door at night when it's dark, I mean.
Does anybody know how many peddler's licenses we give out a year?
I do not, I see that.
We, we can, we can access that pretty quickly, we don't, I don't have it right now. But, but it's pretty active, I mean, there, we get quite a bit of, um, activity. I mean, I don't know about hundreds, but it could be approaching that.
We, we, we just didn't come up with this idea of, well, we need to conform with some other, uh, what other cities are doing on our own. We were challenged, uh, on our ordinance by a, uh, peddling organization. We were challenged several years ago with respect to the, uh, criteria under which we judge their moral and business character. Uh, we resolved that issue without having to change our, uh, code, but based on the more recent challenge, uh, which would have drawn a lawsuit, we decided that it was in the best interest of the city to change it to 9:00 PM and also take care of that other aspect at the same time, as long as we were bringing this forward.
I also have one quick question. Do things like Boy Scouts selling wreaths and hockey pizza and such from the schools have to get peddler's license? Are those just school and kid activities?
There is an exemption in the ordinance for those.
Good. All right, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending city code chapter five by amending section 5.37 relating to the regulation of peddler, solicitors, and transient merchants.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, the next item is approving the second reading of an interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting new firearm dealer stores for a period of one year, up to one year, correct?
Correct.
And adopt resolution authorizing a study and adopt resolution approving summary ordinance for publication. Mr. Getcho.
So all I'll add is that this is the exact same, oh, interim ordinance that was approved on a three to two vote at the last meeting. And so second reading needs to come back, and it was not a unanimous vote at the last meeting, so, um, it wasn't placed on consent. And so you had a, the city attorney provided a presentation at that meeting, so, um, we can obviously answer any questions that you have, but the same circumstances apply in this case, as did the last meeting when you approved the first reading.
Uh, is there a motion?
Well, can we have some discussion first?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess one of the things that I would like to state is that I really don't see the need for having a moratorium, because I think we have a long history of gun sales in Eden Prairie, in our city, and we have not had any issues related to having those gun sales in terms of problems or in terms of, uh, reduced property values or any, any of the other things that we kind of worry about with new businesses coming into the city that we're not really familiar with. In this case, I think we're very familiar with, uh, with gun sales. Also, I think that it's really unnecessary, because I don't think there's, the likelihood of any new store coming into Eden Prairie at this time with, given the, the current number of stores that we have, is, is also a very unlikely event. So I would really like to say that I think this is really kind of a waste of staff time and a waste of taxpayers' money to, to impose this. And I think we can continue to do a study, if we want to do a study, let's do a study, but we don't really need the moratorium on the, on the, on the new stores. But, uh, continue through City Connect and other, other means to study it. And I think there's a lot of good data out there in terms of, um, what has happened in other communities. So I really don't see a need to, uh, put a moratorium in place.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson, I believe you were next.
We've used the moratorium for a number of different things. We were going to change our sign ordinances, so you couldn't have the, uh, signs that changed every couple minutes and things. And as soon as you got one in there, you couldn't do it. It takes a lot of money for a person to start a new business. And I would hate to say halfway through what they're planning on doing, to tell them all of a sudden, no, you can't do it. I would much rather have them know that, and I, it says a year, I, you know, I wouldn't anticipate this being even a half a year. But, um, we've got, um, four gun businesses in town, Arneson's, Gander, Shields, and Walmart. And, um, it doesn't affect them whatsoever, it doesn't affect people's ability in the future to bring in a new business. But in looking, you know, a larger group of citizens did come in and say that they were concerned. And, uh, you know, when we looked at the, some of the comments we've had already, there, there was a certain groups that said, no guns anywhere, well, that's not happening. And another group that said, guns everywhere, and feasible, like you said, that's probably not happening. But there was also another larger group that said, I don't mind them in what I consider real commercial areas, but I don't want them in the little strip centers near my house. Or, um, that's the residential neighborhood commercial. And I think that we need a couple of months to take a look at what fits. You know, we've talked about maybe so many feet between something else, but then people are saying, no, just neighborhood commercial, maybe it shouldn't fit into. I, I think that we owe it to everybody to figure out our rules and then let business people come in without wasting their money in the meantime. And, um, so like I said, you know, it gives us a year, and we've never taken that long. But I think it's only fair to new people who may be coming in for them to know what the rules are and be able to plan where they would want to place their business then, since there is a discussion about changing it. And, um, I don't think it's really as fair the other way to not let them know their, you know. I think we just need a couple of months where nobody's spending money trying to come in before we decide if we're making changes or not making changes. And that's all this does. And we will still have four active businesses doing business the way they've always done.
I think if someone were gonna come in, they would work with our staff, they would realize that there's, you know, potential changes. They were, they're not gonna waste their money, you know.
This, this sort of guarantees that, um, they don't. There's only probably room for so many of any kind of business in a given town, just from a practical business sense. But, um, nevertheless, I think it's, doesn't hurt to take the couple of months, figure out what we're doing, if anything change, do it, and then the moratorium is gone. And, um, it seems like a reasonable thing to take a look at the possibilities and let a council make a decision at some point earlier than a year's time.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Yeah, I think that, uh, we've had this discussion at the last meeting, uh, and I can see that, you know, we're all still, um, standing on what we had talked about before, as am I. Uh, I do think it's a prudent approach, I appreciate everything that you said, Councilmember Nelson. It is also the purview of this, of this body to, um, look deep, make sure we make the very best decisions that, uh, pertain to health, safety, um, of the public. And, you know, asking whether is there a, a buffer appropriate for this, um, this type of business? If so, what should it be? I think those are really important questions. And residents, um, have shown concerns about this. So of course we're going to, I think it's, uh, reasonable to take a look and make sure we make the very best decisions.
Thank you. I agree with everything Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom said, and I also agree with you, Brad, that the chance of a new store coming here in the next year is extremely low, which is exactly why I don't think it's gonna inconvenience anybody at all to get the best information we can possibly get to make the right decision. And we've already started down the road of collecting information from our residents. I mean, we've got, we've got staff that is there to handle things like this. This is not a totally new activity. Anytime an issue comes up that we're concerned about that we feel needs to be studied, we've got staff to do that. So I'm very comfortable with this. Do you want, somebody wanna make a motion?
You wanna go ahead, Jen?
Go ahead.
Excuse me, I move to approve the second reading of an interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting new firearm dealers' stores and adopt a resolution authorizing a study to determine amendments necessary to the city code to protect public health, safety, and welfare, and to provide for sound planning related to firearms dealers. Uh, adopt the resolution approving publication of the summary ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you, the motion passes. Uh, report of the city manager, we have a, a couple of reports.
Couple, couple items, Mayor and Council, thank you. So let's kind of maybe build off the Pizza Lucho's solar, uh, array presentation. Greg Ackerman, uh, who's our consultant apex with, uh, all things solar is here tonight to provide another overview on, um, what the city can do and what we've been talking about for over a year now on, uh, solar power. Several different, uh, programs that are out there. And one of them, which we want, would like action on tonight, would be the city's subscription program for, um, solar awards, so, rewards, so that is being able to subscribe to, um, off-site, um, solar. And then we're also looking at rooftop solar on all of our own city facilities as well, including possibly a community subscription program for our residents at the community center. Those, those latter two items are coming in, in future council meetings, but Greg is here to provide a, a presentation, um, one that you may remember from a workshop last fall, but it's been updated with, with newer numbers, um, new information. And this is a big part, as you know, of our sustainable Eden Prairie initiative. When you look at, um, kind of the four areas of, um, energy and water and pollinators and waste, this is a huge part of our energy plan. So Greg's here tonight to provide an update, and then at least one action, uh, we ask be taken on the solar subscription agreements.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to present tonight as a follow-up. If we could, there we go, thank you. So, as the city manager already alluded to, there's really kind of three parts for tonight. There's the community solar garden subscriptions, there's the rooftop solar, and then there's a solar garden for the community. Just a little bit about Apex, we've been around since 2012, we've been working with the city in a variety of different measures through the years. We were involved in the community center ice arena project, and we really specialize in, um, energy conservation and renewable energy that self-funds. So we're pretty excited today to talk about the opportunities that are available to the city. So the first thing we'll talk about, as, as Rick already alluded to, is the one thing that we'll have in action tonight, that's the off-site solar garden. And then we'll get into the building connected, which is the three facilities that the city owns, city center, maintenance facility, and water treatment plant. And then the last part is a city solar garden that would be on top of the community center. So the off-site solar garden, that's solar gardens that will be built, not even in the city, but within an adjacent county. The way that works is it's actually a program from Excel Energy that allows you to subscribe to it, to a garden that somebody else has bought, built, operates, maintains. And the city basically saves almost a penny per kilowatt hour, um, for those subscriptions. So it's a great way to get some energy savings and some renewable energy. The one kind of caveat is that Excel claims the renewable energy credits, which is only important insofar as when it's made, uh, public statements are made, that we have to be careful that, um, how they're phrased. We can't necessarily say that it's, um, renewable energy because Excel has that claim. They're paying a premium for those claims, so we can say things like, it's solar-powered, but we just have to be a little careful in the press releases. The second part is the solar that will be built on your buildings, the city center, the maintenance facility and water treatment, that's almost a megawatt of solar power, though as you would own the recs for. So then you can claim it's fully renewable, um, it's, it's great. The city, again, would it be paying anything for that? A third-party tax investor builds it, owns it, operates it, maintains it, and you get some financial benefits because it's on your roof, uh, but there's no, oh, they have cash on the city's behalf. The city center would ultimately look like this, that's almost half a megawatt of power up on top of it, which is quite an extensive array. The maintenance facility, this is a corner of the maintenance facility, that's about 129 KW. This building, there's more room for solar, but, um, in order to maximize the financial benefit, we want to make sure that we're not overproducing much. So this is about all of the demand that the maintenance facility consumes. So that maximizes, it doesn't maximize the solar, but it absolutely maximizes the financial benefits to the city. And then thirdly, the water treatment plant, um, you can see some would be on the roof of kind of the maintenance shop there. Some of it will be on the actual water tank. So we've had the structural analysis all done, but that's about another 300 KW of solar again there, which is fairly significant. The big summary of that piece then again is there's no payment by the city. Third-party tax investor owns it, operates it, maintains it. The city buys the power from that third-party tax investor, just like they do from Excel. So now the city would be buying some from the solar panels, some from Excel Energy, because the solar won't produce all of the power those buildings need. However, Excel has some great incentives then that enable the, the city to reap a financial benefit. Roughly 14% of the city center power would come from the solar panels on an annual basis. The maintenance facility would be almost 25%. On a sunny day, the maintenance facility will be off the grid. But over the course of a year, it'll be about 25% of the power, it'll be renewable, from the solar panels. And the water treatment plant will be almost 11%, which is, the water treatment plant has a fairly large electrical load just because you're pumping a lot of water, so that 11% is, is extremely significant. And then again, you get the renewable energy credits, um, so when you have them, you could say, we use solar power, we use renewable energy, you can make all those claims. When we don't have them, um, such as the cases of those off-site gardens, we just have to phrase it a little differently, saying, we support solar power, we support renewable energy. It's still renewable energy generated on your behalf, um, offsetting what you would already consume, but Excel has kind of bought in those marketing claims.
Couple of, just quick questions on that. So, um, for our own facilities with the rooftop solar, then basically we would consume all that is generated, so there'd be no need for storage or no. that is generated, so there'd be no need for storage or no need for selling it to, to Excel?
Correct. And we are setting up net metering agreements, so in the event that the maintenance facility, let's say it's a Saturday and no one's there and it's really sunny, you will have the ability to spin the meter backwards. So on some Saturdays, you may actually overproduce there, the electricity will go back to the grid, it'll be consumed within the community, it won't reach very far, but then on Monday morning, the meter will start spinning forward again. Over the course of a year, you'll still pay about 75% electricity you're paying now because 25% come from the solar panels, but there's no storage needed because that net metering covers that.
And, and so then from an economic perspective, from the investors' point of view, so they're, they're investing it, they're maintaining it and doing everything with the cost, and so then how do they, how do they get ahead in doing this? Basically, the amount that they're reselling it for, they assume that the, for over the length of the time of the investment, they're gonna, they're going to achieve more, more dollars by reselling that energy to us than the cost of, of building it, maintaining it? Is that the general idea?
Yeah, the third-party tax investor return comes from three categories. One is a 30% federal investment tax credit, which they will take. If they take that, then in essence they give up half of it because then they can depreciate the system, but they can only depreciate 85% of the system. But so the depreciation and the investment tax credit are two big categories, but the third category is exactly what you said, is going, instead of you buying power from Excel Energy, you're going to be buying power from the solar panels, so those three categories make up the revenue stream from the tax investor and ultimately their return.
Okay, thank you.
So the third part is actually going to be another solar garden. It will be available to residents, and that will be on the community center. So if you look, the community center roof will be pretty full as well, and almost another megawatt.
Which is the portion that currently has solar?
Right, you can actually see the panels, if you look at the roundabout where people drive in, just to the kind of up of that, you see a very small solar array, kind of a dark array, so that's still sitting there. That may act, that will, that will stay on the building. This is a tentative layout because we aren't as involved in this third part as, as we are in the first two. That may actually get relocated, but it will stay on the building and will still continue to be used.
And do we still have that educational component?
We do, in the, in the lobby, that's correct.
And that's actually a great note is that all of the systems will have live web monitoring, and so city and staff will have access to get onto an internet portal and be able to see almost minute by minute what the panels are doing. It's kind of neat to watch the graphs because on a cloudy day, you can all of a sudden, as a cloud goes by, it will dip for a second and go back up. So that information will be available to the city and staff, which then if you want, you can link to on a website, and you can do all kinds of great stuff with it, but it is all live and, and available as data for you guys to use with residents, with the school districts, however you want to use that. So the city solar garden, again then, that will actually be with Cooperative Energy Futures, they're the main driver of this third part. The city will receive about $6,000 a year as a site lease for that roof. Again, the primary benefit will be that CEF and the city then can work to target and prioritize residents who can then subscribe to that and get a small economic gain from getting some solar panel from that solar garden as well. So we're trying to blend, have a nice blend between let's get some financial benefit for the municipality, but also then provide a win for, a potential win for residents. So when we sum all of those pieces up, this is what it looks like. So again, there's no cash outlay on the city's part, but there is revenue from all of these. In the first year, the city will save a little over $100,000, the first year that everything is up and running, which is substantial. Over 25 years, the city will have reaped an economic benefit of almost $5 million. So we're pretty excited to be able to say, hey, not only are we providing sustainable green energy perspectives, but also from a fiscal stewardship perspective, we're providing some great benefits as well. 7% of the municipal electricity, not residents again, but the municipal electricity will be generated on-site with the recs. The reality is 100% of the electricity the municipality uses will be generated by solar panels. We just again have to be a little careful in the phrasing because of Excel Energy having some of those recs associated with it, but either way, 100% of the municipal's electricity will be generated by solar panels. So we're pretty excited.
Okay, so I just came back from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and there are mayors walking around saying our entire city is solar-powered. Can we say that?
You can say that, but you probably don't want to publish that way because Excel Energy might get upset if you, if it's published that way, so we can work with you on the phrasing, but that's the majority of, of other mayors that are saying that.
Yeah, they're misspeaking, I think.
Are doing the same thing that you're doing, yeah.
It's basically, we can at some point say, you know, all the energy we purchased is solar and we, we
Generate.
Generate some of our own. I assume that's always going to be acceptable.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the reason, just to be clear, the reason that Excel Energy is paying that premium for the recs is they've got legislative mandates to provide renewable power, so if they, and the recs are the legal quantification of renewable energy, so they're paying a small premium because that way they don't have to build a renewable energy plant, somebody else is doing it for them, they're paying a small premium to reach their legislative mandates for renewable energy. That's, that's really the, the background. So we're pretty excited about both the fact that we have 100% renewable energy and then also the fact that we'll be saving $100,000 a year to the city, that's pretty exciting stuff. The off-site solar garden subscriptions, the bulk will be built this year, some may trail into next year. But what we're asking for tonight then is for council to approve Part One, the subscriptions for the off-site solar gardens. Part Two, staff is actually currently working on the contracts for Part Two and Three for the rooftop solar and the community solar garden. Some of the tax investors have been a little bit slow in responding back to your attorney's request, so I apologize for that, but once they are approved, we're anticipating the construction this summer yet and into the fall, so we're hoping by the end of this year, all of the rooftop stuff will be up and running for sure for Part Two, and the rest of it will kind of trail in a little bit over the, the few months after.
And the off-site, we'll get immediately?
We'll get some of it immediately, some of it will be the end of this year, and then some will trail into next year, because it's, you guys use a fair amount of power, so you're going to have a, a variety of subscriptions in a variety of gardens, so there, some are, some are built, some are under construction, and others are in the planning stages.
Yeah, I wondered about capacity because you hear about gardens being built and then being sold out so fast.
Yeah, and we've got, the nice part is municipal clients are a much higher priority for the solar garden operators because you're going to be here for 25 years, you're not going to move, so you, you guys are higher priority, so municipalities get slatted in first, and everybody kind of trails in after that, but you're a much higher target subscriber than commercial or residential.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, questions? It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, we've gone a long way. I'm looking forward to this.
I don't think there's any, there's any risk to us, I mean, it's a win-win-win.
Yeah. We do need to make a motion?
Move to approve solar subscription agreement of a solar reward community project and authorize execution by the mayor and city manager of the agreement and all documents necessary to consummate the subscription.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to talking to you again. The next item, Mr. Getchow?
Yes, mayor, staying on the sustainable Eden Prairie theme, we have a resolution, and you may recall another form of this resolution was brought forward by students of Eden Prairie, students involved in I Matter, Tree Huggers Club in Eden Prairie, and at the end of March, the council was presented with a climate report card from a group of students that you may recall, and a suggestion on a climate inheritance resolution. So following that open podium meeting, the mayor and I met with several of the students, and then there were some follow-up meetings between myself and some city staff members involved in sustainability to see how we could work together with the youth of Eden Prairie and the students, and quite frankly, aside from energy action and climate action, you know, there's a feeling that there's many facets of sustainable Eden Prairie where we want to involve our youth and working with the city and the Conservation Commission in all those areas of the pollinator-friendly initiative and water conservation and waste reduction and organic recycling and recycling in addition to the energy work that we're doing. So tonight we bring forward a resolution that's based on the draft of what the students provided, very similar, really in a nutshell, expressing the commitment of the city council to work with the youth in Eden Prairie to work on climate issues. So tonight, we do have a couple of the students that have been working with us on that, Sophia Trumpy and Zach Spears are here, and, and they want to make a few comments about the work that they're doing and the work that, that we have, maybe Sophia's going to make the comments and Zach will come up, he looks like he's not going to. Okay, all right. So, so come, so come on up, and you have some comments, and then councilmembers, we ask that you adopt the resolution expressing that commitment to work with the students.
Yeah, so we just have a few quick comments. We just wanted to say hello and to express our enthusiasm, but also serious commitment in working with the city council to reach the goals of Eden Prairie's energy action plan that's already implemented, the other sustainable initiatives that you guys have, but also possibly to work together to look for ways to achieve our more aggressive yet necessary goals that were stated in our climate inheritance resolution that was helped drafted by Mr. Getchow, of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2040, and also the 100% renewable electricity by 2030.
And then as I'm going to be a junior, I'm going to be the main one like taking over, so I'm looking forward to working with you guys, and then once again, thank you for like all the initiatives you guys have brought up, and then your being able to work with us and being so polite and not really just showing us the way. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all the work that you've done, all your group, just wonderful participation in the whole governmental process and in the whole effort to build a better, stronger community that leads to a stronger country and world, so I appreciate this. Zach, you're going to be a junior, you said?
Yes.
So you'll be around for two years, so great, and you're graduating.
Yes.
So you'll be gone, okay. We'll look forward to working with you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution expressing a commitment of the council to work with the youth of Eden Prairie to combat climate change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Anything else, any other business to bring before the council? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Whoa.